2023 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Liana Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bonna Reed, Mr. Steven Shawrock, Mr. Marshall Fleer, and Mr. Craig Moots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Moots will now lead us in prayer, followed by Mr. Shawrock leading the class.
Our heavenly Father, as we prepare to start another school year, we ask you to watch over our school and our committee, give us strength and guidance along the way. May we lead by listening and see success in our service to others. We ask this in the name of Jesus, the one who unites us through his love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one entity visible.
Mr. Savoda now will recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, competence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Now I will recite our FISD goals. FISD goals are as follows: Excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management. Now we will do a round robin as we recite our FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are: In FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcomed, partners, and their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, applicable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
All right, now Ms. Reed will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good govern- government, governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month, the code of ethics are highlighted is: I will be fair, just, and impartial to all my decisions and actions. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expression of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Our good government indicator for the month is: A written board operating procedures are in place and are reviewed and adopted on an annual basis.
All right, Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will now move on to reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will start us off with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Odom, thank you, board members, for being here this evening. First of all, we got the beginning of school year coming up, and we're very excited to have our staff that started back today, and we've got our students starting back in about a week and a half. Last week, we did have an opportunity to bring onboard about 48 new teachers. We had a few others in the training that were started in the second semester of last year, but those 48 new teachers, we're excited to have them into our Floridville family and glad they're here with us. We also have our convocation coming up. Convocation's going to be this Friday, so I'll make sure everybody's invited to that. That'll be our chair, drum majors, excuse me, the band drum line, that's what I was trying to think of, ROTC will be there, we'll have two students, they'll emcee that, we'll have a guest speaker as well, so very excited about convocation. During this week, we already have our students starting back, extracurricular activities are kicking off with band, athletics, cheer, dance, those are, those students are all getting ready for another great year as they represent our community, our district, so they'll do that with pride, we know that. As part of our ongoing security improvements, this week, we're also training our staff members with our Raptor app, that is our communication app that we're implementing this year, so we are continuing to improve our security. If you noticed, a couple of weeks ago, we had our publication in the Wilson County News that came out, if you had an opportunity to look at that, that was really good, we had a lot of great feedback from other districts even that contacted us and told us that it was very informative, had a lot of people in the community that made positive comments about that, so we're able to push that out and reach the newspaper folks as well as the people online, so that was a pretty good way to celebrate last year and look forward to this year. Also in our superintendent report, as of Friday, we had 3,700 students, now we're up to 3,868, so we've got over 3,800 students that are currently have completed the registration, returning students, new students, all together, we've got about four, excuse me, 540 new students to the district, that does include our pre-K kids, so those do count as some of our new students. But this campus here, we're actually over the 150 mark, which is what our goal was whenever we wanted to bring this together, and we are now over that 150 mark, so we've reached that goal. So we're, we're doing well with our enrollment and our registration for returning students, very excited about that. We know, we know that'll continue to go up as well as the days get closer and even after school starts. Also on Fri- or excuse me, on Wednesday, we have our back-to-school bash, that'll be along Tiger Lane, starting at 6 o'clock. We will have a community pep rally at 7:00 there at the stadium, so we want to encourage everybody in our community to be out, come out, enjoy that. We will have campuses and organizations to have booths set up along Tiger Lane to interact with families, get that positive energy going before we even start school. As a board, we do have a booth, so make sure you get with Alyssa to schedule a time, we want to make sure that you have a chance to visit other booths as well as working ours, and so we've got that set up and arranged, so excited to have that coming up. As I talked about earlier, convocation, that'll be at 9:00 at the Event Center on Friday, so please make sure you make arrangements for that if at all possible. Policy committee, we do have policy update 121 that's come out, we will need to have a policy committee meeting later this month on August the 28th, Monday the 28th, policy committee meeting, and that'll be at 5:30, and that again will be just be for those policy committee members. Finally, as a reminder, first day of school is Wednesday, don't, don't forget that, always have to remind the staff of that, don't forget the kids are coming too, it's not just the staff. But we also want to remind our community, make sure you're aware that the first day of school is coming, we've got traffic, we've got bus zones, we've got loading areas, make sure you don't pass buses whenever those ambers are on. A lot of people are used to, to going back and forth from work without having to worry about school zones, and now those lights are going to be blinking, so we need to make sure that we're reminding our community about that. Also, please be patient with us, obviously, we've got a new campus here, so trying to get those routines down for here. Bus routes, a lot of parents always call up, and my kid's not home yet, we have to double, triple, quadruple check kids as they're getting on the bus, getting off the bus, and so those things just take a little bit of time to, to smooth out, and after a couple of weeks in school, we'll be running a lot smoother than we do the first day, so please be patient with us, but we're very excited about that. A couple of other things that did come in late, preliminary numbers, so we did get preliminary numbers for our first rating, which is the Financial Integrity Report from the State of Texas, and it looks like we're going to get 100 and have a superior weighted rating, so kudos to Lindsay Angle and her staff, that is very much. I believe the district have been on the other end of that, and so it's great to see us progressing this far. Last year, I know we got an A, but we didn't get 100, so this year, preliminarily wise, and I don't know why it would change, but it looks like we're going to get 100. Also, just recently this week, actually it was earlier today, the state did come out with the maximum compressed tax rate, and it looks like that tax rate for us is going to fall at 61.94 cents. So then we do our tier-two money on top of that for another nickel, so it looks like we're going to be at 66.94. We will have that recommendation in September, again, that's preliminary, but whenever we get the official numbers from the county, which will be later this month, then we'll make that official again in September. So a couple of last-minute information pieces that have been out. Also included in the packet is our hiring sheet for this month, throughout the month of August is when the superintendent still has that authority to offer those contracts, so those have been provided for you as an update as well. A couple of other things, I'm looking at the upcoming dates, we've already talked about, back-to-school bash, convocation, first day of school, policy committee meeting, and then, don't forget, May 4th is Labor Day, so our meeting next month will actually be the second Monday, it'll be only 11. Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Dr. Gilstrap, all right, our president's report, Mr. Schröler will go over the 2023-2024 Student Handbook.
Good evening, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Odom, all Board of Trustees. Each year, Campus Administration and I meet to review the Student Handbook written by TASVE in an effort to help communicate essential informations to parents and our students for the upcoming school year. Before we get started, I believe in your packet and board book, I gave you kind of just a overview pertaining to the changes made and being recommended. This year, we had 11 changes and additions, with the first being simply revising texts in the preface informing parents of how to stay informed of proposed policy changes and rules that may affect Student Handbook provisions. It was just a strike-through. Second update included adding House Bill 1605 into our handbook, we had to include it, but it may be, believe it or not, a couple of years before that actually goes full into effect. But that basically informs our parents and students, the district will make instructional materials available for parent review no later than 30 days before the school year, and flip-flop it for at least 30 days after the school year ends. Kind of think of, some of you that remember the Teaks Resource System, we had a parent portal that the state did this with, it's going to be very similar to that, so, but that is coming down the road. A third update included us adding additional paragraph under the section titled "The Student and the Conservatorship of the State." Basically, state laws requiring districts to develop systems to ease transitions for students who are in substitute care, meaning foster care, and we need to make sure that is shared publicly to our community. Fourth, we added three new exemptions to the compulsory attendance exemptions on the long list we already have, they are the following: One, appearing at a governmental office to obtain U.S. citizenship; two, taking part in a U.S. naturalization oath ceremony; and the third is serving as an election clerk. Per requirement, we included in our Student Handbook information pertaining to a new scholarship program called the Future Texas Teacher Scholarship Program, where we must notify all teachers, students, and counselors of this opportunity. It's really a good scholarship that the high school will be pushing out. The sixth update to this year's handbook pertains to unacceptable and inappropriate use of technology resources. This, this kind of stems from Senate Bill 1893, and basically, that requires school districts to prohibit the installation or use of TikTok on a district device. In regards to hazing, we revised and added, added new language to the hazing section of the handbook, which included adding a law enforcement official to the list of officials to whom a person should reporting, report a hazing event. I think I left you the definition there for your eyes, if you want me to read it to you, I can, just asked. Interesting one here, this is in addition to House Bill 125, it allows a parent or teacher to request that a state assessment instrument be administered to a student in paper format. A district may grant this request for each assessment instrument for up to 3% of the total number of students enrolled in the district, granted on a first-come, first-served basis. Another verbiage change to our handbook pertains to sunscreen. State law now requires districts to allow students to possess and apply their own FDA-approved sunscreen to avoid overexposure to the sun and not for medical treatment of an injury or illness. Prior to this, our handbook stated, "Students whose schedules provide for regular time spent outdoors, including for recess and physical education classes, should apply sunscreen before coming to school." So should apply before, now they can bring it. Included in the handbook is also informing parents, we will now be offering instruction, not just CPR, but the use of an AED at least once out of the student's six years in grades seven through 12. Not every year, seventh grade followed by eighth grade, we have to do that one time in that six-year span. The instruction given is not required to result in CPR or AED certification, but instruction must be developed by the American Heart Association or American Red Cross. There's some guidelines on who we shall use to give that information. And finally, in regards to the school, we followed TEA's recommended revisions and added additional safety information in the Student Handbook for parents and students and others when visiting campuses, such as be prepared to show identification, exit the school at the primary entrance, and leave all exterior doors closed, latched and locked unless actively monitored by a district employee. Again, we as campus administrators meet, most of the time it's APs, we get guidance from campus principals, so these are items we feel is important to let our parents and students of our district know. So I threw 11 changes this year, sometimes there's more, sometimes there are less, and some of these were really, a lot of them you saw was House Bill, Senate Bill, and so forth. Are there any questions for me pertaining to this year's Student Handbook? Thank you, board.
Board members, that is for report purposes, and it's not for a vote, it is still a handbook, just like the employee handbook as well, so I believe that's next.
Yes, for our last report, it was astonishing, over the 23-24 Employee Handbook.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom. Very similar to the Student Handbook that Mr. Schröler presented, the Employee Handbook's also produced, given that most districts use a template provided by TASVE, and most of the changes are minor this year, nothing really new, and they're implemented by different House Bills or Senate Bills, and the full text of the Employee Handbook is provided for you in your board packet, any changes or additions have been highlighted in yellow. So if you want to look at the specific change or addition, but I'm going to just briefly describe some of the changes. A change in, they were changed everywhere, every time that the word required was used, they changed to prohibited, so that's something that TASVE often does, is make a one-word change, and then they do it throughout the entire 100-page booklet. Also, five times, we see where it used to describe disciplinary consequences as further disciplinary consequences for a different action, now it includes the verbiage "up to" and including "termination." So five times, they changed that in this year's book when dealing with employment certification, like when we're trying to verify employment, searches and alcohol drug testing, overtime compensation, saying that employees that work overtime, it must be pre-approved overtime, in the standards of conduct, which is this teacher code of conduct as well, and also when speaking of discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on the basis of sex. So all of those changed to the word, adding the word "up to" and including "termination." On page 20, we also added, TASVE also added payroll deductions, saying that repayment of an overpayment by the district for an employee or a, or a vendor could be, the vendor or the employee could be, will be required to pay it back. Also, we added into our Employee Handbook what the board approved in the spring, those benefits, that additional benefits that were approved for district employees, including the sick leave bank and the bereavement leave, so those have been added to our Employee Handbook. And lastly, there was a subsection just entitled "Safety," much like what we heard from Mr. Schröler, now the title is "Safety and Security." Are there any questions about the updates or additions to the Employee Handbook?
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number four, action items. First action item is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items on the Consent Agenda?
Board members, we do have two things that are added into the Consent Agenda, one is our Region 20 commitments, those are services that Region 20 provides for us annually, and since we do, what we're recommending is to work with them like we typically do, we get that at a much reduced rate versus just going out our own and getting some of those services, so we do have to commit to them for the year to do that, and we typically do that right after the budget comes out. The other one is the Wilson County 4-H Agreement, is adjunct faculty, so that those students that are showing and participating in events, ag events, showing and things like that under 4-H, we're still able to count them as being present and attending an extracurricular activity. So we do have the Wilson County Agreement, so that's what we're presenting tonight, we do not have the ones from Karnes yet, and so typically, they get that, get that to us after school starts, but it should be forthcoming. If there are no questions, I recommend the board.
Mr. President, I move to accept Consent Agenda. Okay.
I second.
Motion, and, and Ms. Reed seconds it, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, they can raise your hand. Opposed, motion carries, so. Okay, thank you, sir. Our next action item is to consider approval of the 2023-2024 District Improvement Plan presented by Dr. Wade.
Good evening, President Odom, Superintendent Gilstrap, and Board members. Tonight, I will present for your consideration the approval of the goals and performance objectives of the District Improvement Plan for 2023-24. I will also be sharing some of the strategies, a few of the strategies, you have the complete plan in your packet if you'd like to review those, but I'm only asking the board to approve the goals and the performance objectives. So as you recall, last year on August the 1st, the board adopted an updated mission, vision, and goal statement. Those four goals that are listed here at the bottom are the four goals in our District Improvement Plan also. Also last year, the board approved the performance objectives for those four goals, which is listed in each of those columns, and I'll be reviewing those in just a moment, and these are the same performance objectives that are being presented in this year's District Improvement Plan. So those are nothing new, that's what I'm trying to say. So the process that we used this year was the district leadership team met twice, once in February and once in March, to review data from four areas, demographics, processes and programs, student achievement and perceptions, and then in May, a draft plan was created, the district leadership team reviewed that, provided input, and then it was presented to our District Education Improvement Committee, or DEIC, in May for input. So the goals and objectives that were presented for approval have been reviewed by those groups. So first, for goal one, excellent student outcomes, we have four performance objectives, student safety and well-being, academic growth, innovative and personalized learning, and future-ready. Some of the strategies included in there include, are our continued implementation of capturing kids' hearts, which I actually trained all of our new teachers last year, the fact that we are going to have police officers on each campus, updating our multi-tier systems of support, or MTSS, process this year, providing some training for special education, and the implementation of our learner-centered instructional model, which we're going to launch tomorrow. Goal two, superior workplace environment, has three performance objectives, continuous learning and support for staff, staff safety and well-being, and staff engagement and satisfaction. A few of the strategies in, for these performance objectives include a professional learning framework for all staff, the continuation of professional learning community processes, but built within the school day, so as you recall, we are providing teachers with an extra conference period, so that's for that purpose, providing a sick bank leave for our employees, and continuing the listening sessions by central office on each campus. Goal three, exceptional customer service and community engagement, has three performance objectives, student engagement and satisfaction, family engagement and satisfaction, and community partnerships. Some of the strategies here are the district, creating a district student involvement committee for, for input, updating our website, which launched today, Friday.
Friday.
Providing some parent resources and some learning sessions, revamping that, and then making sure we're connecting businesses to career events. Am I keeping up the pace yet? Goal four is strategic resource management, and there are four performance objectives in this goal: Strategic and transparent allocation of resources, systematic facility rank, excuse me, management and planning for growth, systematic operational effectiveness and efficiency, and systematic safety and security processes. A few of the strategies here are a budget manual and calendar being shared with staff, our long-range planning committee continuing to meet, and the actions that they have asked us to complete, and the board has, has approved, creating an operational plan, and continued securities training, I don't think that's going away. So that is the District Improvement Plan in a nutshell, the next steps would be, next month, the campuses will present the campus improvement plans for each campus, goals and objectives to the board for approval. Are there any questions? If not, administration recommends the board approve the 2023-2024 District Improvement Plan goals and objectives as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Shawrock. All right, any further questions? All in favor, remember raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, so.
I do want to say, Dr. Wade, kudos to her, her department, and our administrators, this has been a heavy lift, and anytime we can merge a strategic plan with your District Improvement Plan, typically it's two separate things. We've made a very concerted, concerted effort to blend those things together to be more effective and keep us more focused as a district. It was not easy, a lot, a lot of work goes in behind the scenes with administrators and Dr. Wade, so thank you very much for getting those things combined, which is not very common in school districts, so thank you for your.
Okay, next action item is to consider approval of District Professional Learning Plan, also, is that by Dr. Wade?
Yes, sir. So last year, for the first time, the board was required to approve a District Professional Learning Plan according to a Senate Bill 1267. That bill also requires the board to review the Student Board, the State Board of Education Clearinghouse of Resources for Required Training. That particular clearinghouse document is also included in your packet. We are providing those required trainings through our online Edge a Hero platform, as well as face-to-face back-to-school training. In May, a proposed professional learning plan was presented to our District Education Improvement Committee, and they approved that plan, which is one of the few things that the DEIC approves, is a professional learning plan. That plan includes the required training that I just mentioned, as well as training that the district is focused on for this school year. The district calendar includes 12 days of professional development planning after school begins. So all aspects of the clearinghouse are included in our plan, and that plan is also attached in your board packet. So are there any questions about the professional learning plan? If not, administration recommends the board approve the professional learning plan as presented.
Motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
And Mr. Moots makes the recommendations accept.
I second that.
Okay, Ms. Savoda seconds it, any further questions? There are none? I spoke. All in favor, accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wade, and Dr. Wade also. Well, now we will consider approval of an innovative course.
Yes, sir. So this is a recommendation to consider the approval of two innovative courses and in the creation of a new CTE Exercise Science and Wellness Program of Study. With the addition of a second athletic trainer, the high school is recommending a new pathway, our proposed program of study. We already have two of the four courses in that proposed program of study, but two of the courses needed are innovative courses, and the two innovative courses are Principles of Exercise and Wellness and Kinesiology I. Those courses, TEA has already approved as an innovative course, but the statute requires that school boards must also approve the adoption of teaching those courses. So in your packet is an outline of the standards for those two courses, as well as the approval So in your packet is an outline of the standards for those two courses, as well as the approval request from the high school. Let's see. These courses will generate CTE funding, and any resources needed will be, will use the CTE funding sources for that as well.
And these are going to be taught by?
The athletic trainer. I did note also, students in this pathway, one of the things we're wanting is the CTE courses to generate industry-based certifications for our students, and so they will either earn a certification for a personal trainer or a pre-professional certification in nutrition, food, and wellness, one of those two. Are there any questions about those two courses?
So these two courses are kind of the basic ones, and then?
We have two others.
Coach Gio will be doing it now, since he's kind of developed that, he can now take the upper level, the junior senior level, so it's going to be impacted for kids.
Any questions? If not, administration recommends the board approve the offering of Principles of Exercise Wellness and Kinesiology I innovative courses, beginning with the 2023-24 school year.
Mr. President, I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Ms. Loto makes the motion. Mr. Moore, second. Any further questions? All in favor, let me know by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Wade. And we will now consider approval of contract with Inc. for the 2324 Head Start program, again presented by Dr. Wade.
My last action item.
Sure.
For tonight. This contract is a continuing partnership we have with Head Start. As long as I've been here for seven years, we've had a partnership with Head Start. Really, the only difference is the fact their name has changed. They're not BCFS. They are now Inc., Innovative Network of Knowledge. The contract, which is included in your packet, will provide partial funding for six classrooms, teachers, and peer professionals, up to a total of $288,000. That will serve approximately 120 students. The three-year-old pre-K class is taught by a Head Start teacher, because the district is only required to enroll four-year-old students, but their funding also allows us to do a three-year-old class. So there are no substantial changes. I will say, they have been good partners with our transition to the early childhood campus. They've purchased some furniture, which is around the corner, if you want to see that, for this space, the Innovative Learning Lab. They purchased some playground equipment, some STEM curriculum, so several things that we needed for this campus, they have gone above and beyond the contract to support us. Are there any questions about the contract? Administration recommends the board approve the contract with Innovative Network of Knowledge, or Inc., for the 2023-24 Head Start program.
Motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
I'll move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Moot makes the motion, and second? Second motion. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Here are none? Let me know by raising your hand if you approve the motion and administration's recommendation. Thank you very much. Seven, zero. Thank you, Dr. Wade. Now we'll consider approval of the 2023-2024 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline, presented by Mrs. Stern. Dr. Stern.
We'll give Dr. Wade a break. So T-Test is the evaluation and professional growth tool that we use as a district for teachers. Within your board packet, you have a list of recommended T-Test appraisers and the appraisal timeline for the 2324 school year. In addition, according to DNA Local, the board must approve alternate appraisers, as well as the appraisers for each campus. So you'll see listed, it's all of the assistant principals and principals from each campus, as well as four members of the teaching and learning team, including Dr. Wade, that would be used if a teacher were to request a second appraisal. Are there any questions about the appraiser list or the appraisal timeline?
And all of these individuals have completed T-Test training?
Yes, they have went through training. Every year, they have to do an update and re-certify. If not, administration recommends the board approve the 2023-2024 T-Test Appraisers and Evaluation Timeline as presented.
Motion to accept the recommendation from the administration. Mr. Scholz makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Loto, second. All right. Any further questions or discussion? All right. If you approve the motion to accept the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Now consider approval of the 2324 I-C Student Code of Conduct, presented by Mr. Schröder.
Good evening again. In front of you, you should have an update to the seven changes, I believe. Pretty vague. I'll go into a little more detail. With that said, annually, trustees are required to approve a district student code of conduct that governs our procedures and responsibilities regarding student conduct and discipline processes. This document was created by Walsh Gallegos, our legal counsel. This year, there were a total of seven changes to the student code of conduct resulting from the 88th legislative session. The first two changes to the student code of conduct, I'm going to discuss, kind of go hand in hand. The first one deals with vapes. House Bill 114 makes offenses involving the possession and/or use of vapes a mandatory DAEP offense. In other words, any student caught possessing, using, or delivering a vape device must now be placed into DAEP. However, hold on, due to space in DAEP.
Regardless of content.
That's a good point, regardless of content, vape. But like I said, they go hand in hand due to House Bill 114 again. If there is not sufficient space in the district alternative education placement, either at the time of placement or while they are serving their DAEP placement, these students could be moved to ISS at the home campus so that students who commit violent offenses, as defined by the commissioner rule, can be placed in DAEP. Violent offenses, I looked that up, indecency with a child, a violent threat that imposes safety to a campus, terroristic threat, a social media post, that type of stuff. The third of the seven, permissive expulsions. Additionally, the legislation removes the current law requiring that felony drug and alcohol offenses are mandatory expulsions. Any kind of drug or alcohol offenses will remain mandatory DAEP offenses, but now even felony drug or alcohol offenses will be discretionary expulsion offenses. There's a difference between DAEP and expulsion. There's a difference between mandatory expulsion, discretionary expulsion. Four.
Is that like if someone was caught in the law, and they come and tell us, does this fall under this part?
If someone was caught with?
Like arrested, you know?
Like off-campus?
Off-campus.
Yes. We would get notice of student arrest, Dr. Gilstrap and I, and our chief of police, and that is, that is a good, and I can give further clarification. On-campus, certainly. Off-campus, that's a good question, Ms. Reed, and I can answer that, but we would get notification if it was an arrest. And then we go into, we put our measures in place for consequences for that student. The fourth change regards threat assessments. Before a team may conduct a threat assessment of a student, the team must notify the parent of or person standing in parental relation to the student of the assessment. In conducting the assessment, the team shall provide an opportunity for the parent or person to participate in the assessment, either in person or remotely, and to submit to the team information regarding the student. After completing a threat assessment of a student, the team shall provide to the parent of or person standing in parental relation to the student the team's findings and conclusions regarding the student. This is something FISD, and I'm proud to say this, we've been doing this all year. This isn't something new. This is something we have followed before. It was put in place, but not to this extent, but this has been our practice. Five, information about special education and evaluations regarding placement of a student in DAEP. The school district shall provide information to the student's parent or person standing in parental relation to the student regarding the process for requesting an FIE, known as a full individual, an initial evaluation of the student, and that falls under Texas Education Code, Section 29.004. Transition plans, this is the sixth, the seventh, must now include the provision of information to the student's parent or person standing in parental relation to the student about the process to request a full individual evaluation of the student for purposes of special education services. And the last one, there's been a pretty significant change in the definition of an e-cigarette. It is now defined differently. The new definition basically reads an electronic cigarette or any other device that simulates smoking by using a mechanical heating element, battery, or electronic circuit to deliver nicotine or other substances to the individual inhaling from the device. Some things that were strike-throughs was they removed jewels from last year's e-cigarette definition, and in addition to this student code of conduct, they added e-cigaret and e-pipe, or other, or under another product name or description. It's a lot. So are there any questions, board, pertaining to the student code of conduct? We don't have a whole bunch of say in that.
So each student will sign this as a script?
Yes, sir. The parent, there is, there is a, I don't know if it's called a memorandum, there is a certificate, acknowledgement form is what it's called.
Every year, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Are there any more questions? Yes, Ms. Reed?
Do we still have the detectors in the bathrooms at the high school?
We do have vape detectors installed in certain areas of our campuses. Yes, ma'am.
Because some of them, they have a hood, and then they have the little string, and that string is hooked up to.
Yes, ma'am.
They're very creative.
Yes.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. Okay. If there are no more questions, administration recommends the board approve the 232024 FISD Student Code of Conduct as presented.
Mr. President, I move to accept the administration's recommendation. Mr. Moore makes a second. Mr. Moore, second. Any further questions? There are none? All in favor, accepting the recommendation of the administration. Let me know by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, board.
Now, Mr. Schröder will also, as we consider approval, calling the November 2023 General School Board motion, will also be fining this.
On November 7th of 2023, the trusteeships of Liana Martinez, District 3, and Jason Saboda, District 5, will expire. In accordance with state laws and local policies, a trustee election is to be held in November of 2023. The district will be holding a joint election with the County of Wilson, which we have been doing for several years, which is a requirement for school districts. The district will be contracting with the county elections administrator to conduct the election. Are there any questions?
What is the timeline for applications and all?
Deadline for, to submit an application is August 21st. That's when we must receive the application here at Central Office. If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the order calling the general election for November 7th, 2023, as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Moot makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Two seconds. Any further questions? All in favor, accepting the administration's recommendation. Let me know by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries seven zero. And now, Mr. Schröder will allow, we will consider approval of joint election contract with Wilson County.
Yes, sir. State law requires a school district to hold a joint election with a city, county, or other local government entity. Therefore, we have agreed to hold a joint election with the county, which was approved by the Secretary of State. In order to meet the requirements for a joint election, the county and the district must have one common polling place on election day. In visiting with our county commission, county election clerk, that place will be the American Legion Hall, which is located on 1412 Fourth Street. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Do we know that boundaries and everything, especially since we just had the redistricting, that all of that has been updated? You're going to ensure that they have the correct?
Yes, the boundary lines and so forth. Yes, I will be visiting with, her name's Olga Marrero, on that. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And then, what about the maps? Is there a way to update some of the maps that are posted online? You can't tell where the boundaries are. They're very illegible. You can't read it, decipher what it is, even when you're zooming in on it.
The city?
The district, because it's so far out.
City, city. I will, I will check into that. That's a good question, and I don't want to mislead you. I think there is a reason, and I know I looked into that in the past.
Because I've looked at other school boards. I don't remember which ones I looked at, and it's very clear. You can see the roads, the names of the streets and our highways, and ours are just, you can't.
So what we can do is get with the demography that we worked with, two years ago.
Two years ago.
We can get with them to see if they can provide more of a digital interface.
Yes, that's what we need, that.
And I'm pretty certain we did that, and for some reason, but we'll check into that. Thank you.
That's happened before, and they've had some upset people on both sides, so we don't want that to happen.
Yes.
Very clear. Good point.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Any other questions? Okay. If not, administration recommends the board approve the joint election agreement with the County of Wilson as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
Mr. Moot, second. Any further questions? If you have none, accept the administration's recommendation. Let me know by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Schröder. Now we will consider approval of purchase exceeding $50,000 for interlocal agreement with ESC 13, Dr. Williams.
Board members, if you recall, back in June, the board accepted the recommendation from the Long Range Planning Committee. Part of that recommendation was to develop a master facilities plan consisting of a demographic study, a square footage study, capacity studies, multiple various pieces of that plan. And so we did go out and through Region 13, we would like to do an interlocal agreement with them as our procurement process so that we can do our agreement with Sledge Engineering. That allows us to expedite that. It'll be about a three-month turnaround, is what they're estimating. They have already been involved in a couple of our conversations and our meetings, so they've got a little bit of a head start on it. But this interlocal agreement with Region 13 will allow us to go through them as procurement, so we won't have to open that up and bid it all out. So it does exceed $50,000. I believe the cost on it is?
Seventy-four-two.
Seventy-four, and it was right under seventy-five. And that's, and that is a seventy-four-two.
The guaranteed amount?
Yes, sir.
Not to exceed.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any questions? Here are none. Administration recommends the board approve the agreement with Region 13 as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Moot makes the motion. Mr. Moore, second. Any further questions? There are none? Let me know by raising your hand if you agree with the administration's recommendation. All right. Seven, zero.
Board members, that will go a long way in our process as we continue to develop our plan moving forward for facilities.
All right. The board will now convene in the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel, and 551.076, and 551.089, liberation regarding security devices or security audits. No voting will take place in the closed session, and the action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. The time is 7:19 PM. The board will now reconvene into open session at 8:39 PM. We have concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 8:39 PM.
Perfect.